Thanks for coming, everyone.
You don't really mean that.
Come on, come on. All right, the chairman's report. I signed the PR 19-10 payroll. Also, alternate members are needed for zoning vote of appeals. Anyone interested, please send a letter of inquiry to our office. So, under new business, we have a fiscal year 2019 appointment of planning board member to the Conservation Commission. This would be Rachel McManus.
Motion to appoint?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for taking on yet more responsibility. All right, we need to review and approve 2019 liquor license application and sign the 2019 liquor licenses as follows. 00016-RS-0794 Plum Island Grill Incorporated, DBA Plum Island Grill, 2 Plum Island Boulevard, vote to sign EBCC renewal certification 2019.
Vote to approve and sign.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Review, approve, and sign 2019 business license renewals as follows. If anyone wants to revisit one, just say hold. Nassar Abu EDBA Ale Prime Energy, 17 Central Street. Ron Barrett, DBA Barrett Transportation, 18 Hutchinson Road. General Business Vehicle Transport. Ron Barrett, DBA Plum Island Taxpayers Association, 8 Plum Island Boulevard. Common Victuola in Parkamore. Henry C. Becker, DBA Henry C. Becker Custom Building, 8 River V Drive. Gail Indolphy, G&amp;G Antiques, 160 Hay Street, General Business. Christine and Doug Rupp, DBA Harmony Natural Learning Center, 97 Newburyport Turnpike. Newbury Auto Sales. James A. Motzkin, Treasurer, 60 Newburyport Turnpike, Motor Vehicle Class 3. Solvano Witz Family Associates Incorporated. DBA Main Street Minima, 53 Main Street. William and Louise Robitaille, Pheasant Meadow Farm, 7 Paul's Way, Found Products. David and John Moulton, Riverfront Marine Sports, 292 High Road, Auto and Marine. Sales, Storage of Boats, Marine, Supplies of Gasoline. Stephen Andrea Tola, DBA Steve Service Incorporated, 52 Main Street Byfield, Use Car Dealer. Stephen Andrea Tola, DBA Steve Service Incorporated, 52 Main Street Byfield, Auto Repair and Sales of Related Items. William D. Francesco, Stowaway Storage, DBA Newbury Self-Storage, 131 Newburyport Turnpike, General Business Self-Storage. Edward S. Supren, DBA Supren's Driving School, 93 Newburyport Turnpike, General Business and Driving School. Howard Tolman, DBA Tolman Automotive, 24 Middle Road, Auto and Marine. Bernadette Goceen, DBA Pilots, Pilates of Newbury and Port, 89 Hanover Street, General Business. Jeffrey C. Woodburn, Little River Realty Trust, 17 Newburyport Turnpike, General Business Fuel Storage and Delivery. Barry Davis, BD Automotive, 24 Middle Road, General Business Automotive. Kim Wilkinson, Manager, Adlin Road, Conference and Retreat Center, 46 Elm Street, Common Pamela Doady, DBA Beach Dog Daycare, 96 Newburyport Turnpike, Animal Care. Norma D. Reader, High Tail Acres, 120 High Road, Found Products, Feeds and Related Items. Carla Capalupo, 26 Plum Island Boulevard, Parkamore. Jeffrey Christensen, DBA Plum Island Fine Wine and Spirits, DBA The Cottage, 14 Plum Island Boulevard. Jeffrey Christensen, DBA Plum Island Fine Wine and Spirits, 14 Plum Island Boulevard, Parkamore. Jeffrey Christensen, DBA PI Rentals LLC, DBA The Cottage, 14 Plum Island Boulevard. General Business Surf, Paddle, Kayak, Skate, Sales and Rentals. Kendall Bowie, DBA Mad Martha's Island Cafe, 51 Northern Boulevard. Linda Gamash, Sadie Spaher, 6 J Fruit Street, General Business and Beauty Shop. Neil Dietz, Edward Lynch Jr., DBA Dietz &amp; Lynch Capital, 28 Green Street, General Business.
Motion to approve all.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Review, approve, and sign 2018 business license renewal. Narayan Patel, DBA BGS Variety, 6D Fruit Street, Common Victuola.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have no town administrators report tonight. Tracy is not with us today. Old business, table from 11:27, 18 Board of Selectmen Meeting, appointment of reformed building project construction committee.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to form a three-member building, excuse me, construction committee that has Eric Swan, John Keller, Bob Connors, and Mike Riley as ex officio to build a police station.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to read the charge that came back from the town council.
Okay.
A three-member committee appointed to work with architects, OPM, and police chief to deliver plans for and construction of a functional police station that meets the needs of the town, Newbury Police Force, and will address the projected growth of same over the next 20 years. The committee shall coordinate all bidding and construction with the Chief Procurement Officer of the town. No expenditures of funds shall be permitted without approval of the town accountant and Chief Financial Officer. The committee shall conform to all open meeting laws and public record law requirements. In the event there are any funds remaining falling complete construction, the committee shall turn its efforts towards the commencement of the renovation and addition of town hall. The committee shall meet regularly and shall, at least monthly, report to the selectmen for the selectmen's approval of the work to date.
Okay.
Perfect.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to go to approve the charge as well.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the charge.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can you name the people?
Yep.
Okay.
Did you get them?
Anyone see anything I missed?
Nope.
Citizens' concerns. Seeing none?
Excuse me, I had one concern.
Sure, come on up. Oh, you, sorry, you can, no, Jim, stay seated.
I'm good, I'm good. I understood there was three people in committee. There was a motion, I thought, but four were brought up. What is the committee made of, three or four?
Committee motion was three people. It was Eric, Bob, and John, Michael's ex officio, as stated at the last meeting and everything, you know, that we said before.
So, so there's three voting members of the committee?
Right.
Any other citizens' concerns? Come on up.
Shouldn't say anything.
Yes, please name and add.
Please, it's from High Road. I just have a couple of items I want to talk about. I'm really disappointed that after the vote, the large town vote in favor of a standalone committee, that we're only having three members on the board of the committee, and that initially it was open to other resumes and all, but that you had maintained that there was still only three. And I just thought that because the townspeople, the taxpayers, conservative taxpayers, had done their homework, they had worked hard, they had educated people, they have a long perspective because they've been asked for a long time of this issue, that's come up before, and they are fiscally responsible, and I think that's why they've got such support from the town that they wanted to see and have built just a standalone police station. So, I think that in general, just another couple of comments, that there's really no guarantee, as we know, that spending a lot of money will assure, you know, a home that's well-built or a school that's well-built. And I wanted to offer as an example that in the town where I worked teaching for a long time and active, we had, we spent per student far less than other towns in the area and always had very high scores statewide and in New England. And so then I went back and thought about that, and I said, it's because there was a lot of vigilance and there was a lot of transparency in the town. People worked together, documents were shared, they were well-kept, they were clear, there was open communication in the town, there was respect for one another, there was a lot of courage and support, there's a lot of administrative support from the teachers and realistry to core among the teachers, all the way from the superintendent right down to the elementary teachers, and that's why it worked. So, when you think about it, I mean, what is that message? The message is that, I thought about it and said, there are really two words. One is vigilance with respect to the budget itself, and we need to have people on the committee who are experts in construction, so vigilance and expertise in construction. So, I'm not sure why the committee, the DOS, is not offering more seats at the table, even two more seats at the table from, not necessarily, I can offer one man who has responded and has passed in the resume, Jim Moran, he'd be outstanding, he'd be excellent, he has a lot of knowledge regarding this area, and I think that we should be another person because five people at the table is not the same as 25 people, so five people is workable. While I appreciate, and very honestly saying, I appreciate the work that the police chief has done, and I think he's worked very hard, he's given his input, I don't think that he should be a voting member of the committee because he's really dealing with, again, vigilance and expertise in the area of construction and budget. And one little thing, that when I first moved here, we joined the Historical Society and the tours of the houses and all, and one Halloween, we went to the grave, the cemeteries. And the person giving the tour, it was very interesting, she was very, very good, and she pointed out different tombstones and said, you know, this person is lying here, this person there, they didn't get along, and this person, this family didn't get along. So, at the end of the tour, people's response was, does anyone get along in Newbury? It was rather humorous, and I thought, well, maybe it might be, you know, lesson to, from this day forward, to make sure that people work together because it's not really about one person or one entity, it's really about all the townspeople, and I think the selectmen have heard of what the townspeople want. So, vigilance and expertise is what I offer. Thank you.
Can I respond to that? The, your point, I believe, was that we were to ensure that we had qualified members to sit on this committee. All of our records that we get before us are all public. Have you seen the three gentlemen that we've oinked, have you seen their resumes?
I have not, but my point was, not just, I'm not necessarily saying that those people aren't qualified, I'm just saying that they are on one side of the board, and it would be nice to have a representation from the large percentage of people who voted for the single building, just to give it a little bit of balance, and I would think that, given that, the selectmen might appreciate it because it would maybe, you know, give more confidence in the townspeople to what the board is doing.
Well, I feel my role as an elected official on the board of selectmen is to put who is most qualified to be actually a steward of the taxpayers' money, which is a six and a half million, and I had asked Mr. Matthews to please submit anything to us showing me his resume, and we didn't get anything. Mr. Marie, Ellen, did you get any resume? I've never gotten a resume of what he's, so I have, as far as, from my perspective, all I got for resumes, CVs, was three professional men who have worked in this field for many years, have experience in public procurement, have built large buildings, and I am very pleased, very thankful, and very grateful that we have this type of caliber of people that not only live in the town of Newbury, but that are willing to step up and volunteer because this is going to be a two-year commitment. And these people have jobs, that they work in Boston and they build other buildings, so I do not feel as if I are appointed anyone that is not qualified, that I think that having three taxpayers and three people willing to volunteer, I am very thankful for all three of them.
I respect that, and I, but I also think that just from the other percentage of voters, that was a large percentage, it would be nice to have people have a seat at the table from the other side.
And if they were qualified, they absolutely may have had a seat.
Would you consider opening the, this up again for a little while?
No, at this point, no, we need to move this forward. I don't.
Good. So. Jim?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, what is the objection to having five? What I'm hearing her say is not take the people off, she's just said, could we have two more people on, and five people committee worked very well.
But I don't feel as if we got five qualified candidates. I mean personally, I got no resumes, I don't have anything that, I don't have anything to show me that they are, that there's qualifications, that could be.
And with respect, I'll just push back, as an objective person sitting here, no dog in the fight, right?
No, I don't.
It just feels to me like the selectmen are shutting off an opportunity to bring onboard a few people to make this process, which we've been trying so hard to get, go forward.
So, my comment to that is that these meetings are all going to be held in public, and I truly hope that the citizens, Newbury concerned, citizens, taxpayers, do pay attention and do come and do report back to their constituents, and everything is going to be held in public. We don't do anything in secret.
Jim?
I had forwarded resumes to you, JR, and to Bob, and to Eric, so did that get through the system to you?
Did you forward it to the selectmen's office, like I told you to?
I just forwarded to you directly, and Bob and Eric.
Did you forward it to the selectmen's office?
I have it's ours.
I might send an email to the chairman of the board of selectmen, I think it's there.
Right, but you play a game. You see 10 people on an email, and then I tell you to forward it to the selectmen's office. I'm not your messenger, that's a proper way to do it, just like all the other candidates do. And I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
Bob, did you get a copy?
You're playing it, okay, Jim.
Okay, and Eric, I sent, there are two copies, one at home and one at his office.
But I never got it.
Guys, we made a decision, we voted on it. This is not in any way, shape, or means to shut out people that worked hard to make a vote go one way. There might have been just as many people that wanted some of the other things, I don't know. The three people that we voted on, you're inferring that they voted for anything besides. We don't even know, I never asked the guys if they voted for a standalone police station, they might have. But I can guarantee you, there will be open communication, Mike is going to be ex officio, that opens him up to come to the board of selectmen when the season's going to thunder. We're going to try to build the thing for 6.5. We're not coming back unless something outstanding occurs to where we're trying to put it in the ground for any extra money. So, we heard what the vote asked for, and this board has tried extensively to meet that process. So, we picked the three people that, at least in my mind, and it seems in the other board members' minds, can expedite the process in the quickest way so that we're not paying another $100 a square foot from what I paid for 6.5 when it was 320. And if people aren't satisfied with that police station and it doesn't come in under budget, then you can come on back at us and say we didn't accomplish what we wanted to accomplish. But that's why we chose the people with the most experience with this process. John was on the selection committee, Eric's been on since day one, and Bob was on, so I mean, they're well-versed, they've been up to their ears in it, and they're going to build a standalone police station, hopefully on budget. Yes, sorry.
My final comment is, and I respect your opinion, but I just think that it's a missed opportunity on the part of the board of selectmen, because I know that at the meeting that we had for the firemen's, at the Fireman's Hall, I know that, of course, you were very, you know, disappointed at the vote that was cast, but it's a missed opportunity, I think, to gain confidence in the townspeople, and to add people on the board, two more people who represent the voters who voted for it, would just, I think, give you people a lot more confidence in general.
I think it's dangerous to assume how people vote on different issues. The appointees to this committee, no one in the audience or at this table can be certain how they voted on that issue. I just think it's, I think it's stereotyping and jumping to conclusions, personally. Any other citizens' concerns? Fred, please come on.
Oh, she didn't have to come up.
I didn't recognize her.
Oh, boy.
Fred, you've got a busy day, haven't you?
This is so stupid, this is so stupid. I have a question and a comment. Sounds like you've made a decision at some point to do three. I don't mean tonight, you made it at some other time.
It was at the last meeting.
Was that at an open meeting?
Yeah, the last meeting, I know I discussed the need for a small committee being an efficient committee.
A three-member committee?
I believe so.
Oh, I didn't hear it. I was here, but I didn't hear it.
I suggested adding a fourth member, there was not a lot of support for that, so.
And it was even talked about the meeting before that.
And a comment. I'm sure. You're going to have an open meeting, these are all going to be open meetings, can we have these meetings in the evening when people can attend them instead of 7:00 in the morning? I mean, this is really, this is really ridiculous, 7:00.
Once the committee is gone, once the, I understand, but you've got to remember that these people work and they go to Boston, so it's kind of, they have to work it around their schedule. I mean, I can have the committee.
What about the citizens?
It's, I'm going to ask the committee if you could please try, I just see two members, I don't see John here, if you could please try to work around their schedules, I mean, an evening schedule, if at all possible. Keep in mind that it's easier for most residents to get evening meetings, please.
I mean, obviously, too, having Bob Connors, obviously, having all the.
You have all the above.
I think the cameras are probably, I don't understand that.
No, my boy did.
The, having the meetings televised provides the opportunity for anyone, really, at any time to look at the meeting.
We don't allow have Comcast, so we can't, we can't all see it.
I think the library.
No, but you can go on YouTube and watch the reruns.
Yeah, that's true.
You can go on YouTube and watch the reruns.
But I think, just to add some clarity here, I think the, you've issued a very specific charge. I don't think there's any confusion on the charge and what the taxpayers and voters want of this community, the standalone police station. The good thing is, a lot of work has already been done. You have a location, and believe me, getting a site selection can be a challenge and a lot of time was spent. You have a budget, okay, which is a not-to-exceed budget, and you already have all of your programming needs done. That information now needs to be converted into an actual project, and it's more technical in nature. The bells and whistles are designed by state building code accreditation in your budget. And I think the committee has selected we will work within those parameters, and certainly anyone that's ever come to a meeting, Jim, you've been at the meeting before. Personally, I welcome all people at a meeting, and I enjoy talking to them. I think a lot of good ideas are hatched out by having that discussion.
Thank you.
Well, I can't make 7:00 in the morning, so that's just me personally, but I mean, that's a very unusual time for public meetings.
So, Mr. Thurlow, before you sit down, can I ask a question? I read in today's paper, you wrote an article, a letter to the editor.
I think you do this.
No, but I, while you're up, do you mind?
Oh, go ahead.
Some time ago, the Newbury Selectmen secretly okayed the installation.
Oh, I knew you were going to get your own.
Of an easy, cool, real system? Well, that suggests.
That was kind of a jab at the newspaper when I noted you, because Salisbury got all publicity, and there was nothing when, when it happened. I don't even know when it happened here.
Well, I'm going to tell you when it happened. We don't meet secretly. We do not meet secretly.
I hope not.
We do not, and this suggests that we violated the open meeting law, and I need to correct.
That wasn't my intention.
Well, that's what it suggests, so I need to correct that. In 2014, that is when the FEMA issued this port security grant program, and it began to directly support maritime transportation infrastructure security activities as a direct result of the September 11th, 2001 events. That's when this all got rolling, all started. I have copies of meeting minutes from past meetings. On February 11th, on 2016, the Plum Island Study Committee first mentioned these cameras in their meetings. Again, on June 28th, 2016, Chief Riley updated the board of selectmen on the status of the grant. On July 26th, 2016, issues around the waste receptacles at the Plum Island, Jeff Walker mentioned, he noted that the cameras were slow in coming. May 9th of 2017, Chief Riley again updated us on the project is still ongoing under citizens' concerns, and on August 28th, 2018, the town administrator report, the town finally received notifications that the camera installation has begun. The board has never met and decided on locations for that. Chief Riley is here, I could ask him if he can comment on where the locations were.
And Alicia, the reason why it was never out purview to locate the cameras.
Yeah, I understand.
Home lane of security.
Way, way off subject here, way, way off subject here. She's jumped to something else, and I don't want to take up the time on.
It's on subject, it was in the newspaper this morning.
No, no, but I mean, we were talking about a different subject, but seeing as how you offered the chief, maybe the chief can explain why you located it from where he referred it, because I know he took two out, so.
The whole purpose of the grant was, number one, I don't like being accused of things appearing into people's yards. That doesn't happen, that's blatantly false, what you wrote in the newspaper, I don't like that. You've never once had a conversation with me, you've never once seen where those cameras point, so pointing into people's yards, I take that very seriously.
Well, it sure looks like they look right directly across the road.
Yeah, but you don't know that, Fred. Have you ever come to me and said, hey, chief, where do those things point?
No.
No, so, but you're writing it in the newspaper like it's true.
I guess I'll make a visit then.
So, but anyway, I digress. When the grant first came out, the federal government asked me to notify them of all the egress points on the waterway, table 5 or 6. There's Plum Island Center, there's the backside parking lot off Plum Island Turnpike, Cottage Road, Pine Island Road, and at the landing. And you would talk maybe about the bridges, too, my? Yes.
Who identified these sites?
I did.
Oh.
It's the federal government.
Pine Island Road?
Why don't you stop right there and let me finish, please?
Okay.
When I identified all those, we were told we'd probably get three cameras out of the six parts. They asked what our preference was, Plum Island Center, obviously, the town landing was a major one for us, and the backside of Plum Island Bridge. They started installing the cameras, just, they did Salisbury and they're trying to do line of sight down, all the way down the coast. They got Salisbury in and up and running, then they came and installed Newbury without telling us that they were installing. They installed on Pine Island Road and Cottage Road without us knowing.
Yeah, that's secretly, yeah.
And then, some, that's not secretly, they just, they had six locations, they installed cameras on those locations without us knowing because they were in the line of sight.
But who is that?
The federal government.
FEMA.
The grant people. They couldn't install on Plum Island because they're microwave, and it needs a direct line of sight, and they're having logistical trouble finding where they can get a direct line of sight because the tower they hit is in Newburyport, and so a direct line of sight from Plum Island to Newburyport is very difficult, so we're having logistical problems with Plum Island. So, they had three cameras, so they went Cottage Road, Pine Island Road, and the landing. We didn't know about it until neighbors started calling us, going out of their minds, that, you know, Big Brother's watching, and I understand that, if I lived there, I'd be upset too, all of a sudden there's a surveillance camera in my backyard. I asked the grant people to move those cameras, which they did. They took the ones off Cottage and Pine Island Road, they deployed an extra one on the river, on the Parker River Bridge facing upriver, so the harbor masters can see upriver, not pointing onto anyone's property, just underwater, and the one at the landing. We only have two right now, which have been out of commission for maintenance for a week and a half. When the third one comes, we're going to have it on the backside of the Plum Island Turnpike in that parking lot. I put in for a fourth one, if we ever get the logistical issues for Plum Island Center figured out and the line of sight figured out, then we'll have the fourth one. figured out, and the line of sight figured out, then we'll have the fourth one at Plum Island Center. Rest assured that any camera, the program, the technology is so good, the program for those cameras, the person that programs it can map out on a map, this is private property, the camera won't point there. Even if I could point and zoom, which these cameras that are in place now are fixed, they just point out at the landing of the water and halfway across the river, and then up the river, not onto anyone's property. We can't zoom in, we can't point and shoot, we can't manipulate the cameras at all. If they pointed it all onto private property, the programmer would carve that out on his program, and even if we could point and look at private property, it would just blackout. We cannot fix that, that's all in the federal government programming, we have no control over that. So, there is, I'm a huge proponent of people's privacy. I don't want to look at anyone's property, never want to, I don't care what you're doing to private property, as long as you're not breaking the law and I don't get called, knock yourself out. So, it's just the way it is. It's America. So, yes, the cameras are up, the cameras are functional, right now they're down for maintenance, but they're functional, we don't look at people's private property during storms and during other emergencies, you'll be thankful that you have them, and once we get it up and running on Plum Island, they're going to be very happy. And they're in some really busy towns, and we went for training in Ipswich back in early August, and they showed some of these towns down on the Cape where these cameras are, and I mean, it's pointing from a tower out over the whole town, onto the water, and just everything, all private property, all windows, everything is blacked out. You couldn't manipulate that camera to see into someone's private property if you wanted to, so I'm very comfortable with it, and if it ever got to a point where I wasn't comfortable and people's privacy was being invaded, I'd request that you would come to the board.
Well, that's interesting, because the article in the newspaper says Salisbury could zoom in and ours can't do that.
No, ours don't do that, we have two fixed ones right now at the bridge and at the landing. The Plum Island Center one, I've requested a point to zoom, so we can look up and down the beach, especially during storms, so that way I don't have to put somebody other on the beach. That's a point to zoom, but those privacy areas will be blacked out, you know, if it don't point to zoom down the public beach, and if we try to go a little further and it's encroaching on someone's property, it will black right out, but that camera's not even up yet, we're having logistical problems with the line of sight of the microphones. And that's it, and the things you'll see on the poles down on Pine Island Road and Cottage Road, they're just repeaters, where the microwave bounces off those to the next one, to the next one. They're not radio signals, they're not anything, it's just a repeater, we don't listen to anything. I don't care, do what you want, don't break the law, signal to drugs.
Thank you, Mike. And so, this is all, this is all part of the public record, all these dates, it's all part of the public, nothing was said in secret.
Well, I apologize to the crowd for getting off subject because I know we were on a different subject, but that was, that was your problem.
Thank you.
Fred, come on up.
I have so much respect for you, JR, coming to my houses, making decisions. There's so much animosity, anger, resentment, you know, I love that you're going to go forward with that, you know, and you can stand up here for 15 minutes, chief of police, explaining your situation, but you can't accept Jim Moran on the committee, and he never changed everything. I know you're an inch and stone, and I'm not going to get into a fighting contest, but, you know, just because, you sent out four or five emails, I mean, just because they got to the wrong people, you did everything you were supposed to do. You know, you might want to just consider adding one person, taking all of this attention and stop away, that's all.
Thank you, Fred, and I will repeat, I instructed Jim to forward his correspondence to the board of selectmen. All right, any other citizens' concerns? Review meeting minutes.
Motion to sign November 20th, meeting minutes?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to sign November 27th, meeting minutes?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to sign more?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I imagine executive session replacing our being.
We need to.
Okay.
Any meeting updates?
One quick thing, we just signed a year's contract for the veterans, we haven't counted, so one year, we can't go back at it again, the end of the year.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Fred.
I think Sam's got to weigh in on what I was planning.
So, I.
He already did.
I haven't spoken to Sam since you left.
Oh, I just left him to talk to you, you can look at it.
Check him out. Yeah, okay, thank you.
It looks great, Fred.
We copied him, gave one to each of the board, so any other meeting updates? All right?
So, I move pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a2, the board moving to executive session to contract negotiations with non-union personnel, namely, the deputy chief of police. Okay, so roll call vote?
JR Colby, yes.
Selectman Chuck Fair.
Yes.
Selectman Damian Jessupson.
Yes.
Selectman Alicia Greco, yes. Selectman Jeff Walker.
Yes.
This meeting will not reconvene at the conclusion of the executive session.
All right, thanks for coming, everyone, if you could excuse us for executive session.